So I'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the City of Daly City Recreation Commission meeting, which is a special meeting today, Monday, November first at six P M. A COVID nineteen announcement regarding public meetings pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, E. Members of the Daly City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream at bit dot L Y slash D C special N O V one or on local channel twenty seven on Comcast. For public participation, there are two ways to submit public comments. First, send written comments by four P M on meeting day. And second, join to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email active at daily city dot org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members prior to the meeting. Comments received after four P M will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission members following the public meeting. Comments are not read aloud into the record. To speak at the meeting via Zoom, join at U S zero two W E B dot Zoom dot U S slash J slash eight, four, one, three, two, eight, six, six, zero, four, four. Zoom will require an email address and name. The name entered will be visible online and will be used to notify that it is your turn to speak. You may also join by visiting zoom dot U S slash join. Enter meeting I D eight, four, one, three, two, eight, six, six, zero, four, four, then enter email address and name. The number for our first twenty twenty one Special Recreation Commission meeting may also be accessed via telephone by dialing um one, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. Enter the meeting I D eight, four, one, three, two, eight, six, six, zero, four, four, then press pound. When you would like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum and speakers may only comment once per item. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. The city will not be providing technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the live stream of the meeting on the city's virtual meeting website at H T T P S slash B I T dot L Y slash D C special N O V one. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Office of the City Clerk at nine, nine, one, eight, zero, seventy as soon as possible. Availability of public records. All public records to an open session item on this agenda, which are not exempt from disclosure pursuant to the California Public Records Act that are distributed to a majority of the legislative body, will be available for public inspection at the City Clerk's office, City Hall located at three, three, three Ninetieth Street, Daly City, California, during normal business hours at the same time that the public records are distributed or made available to the legislative body. This meeting is now called to order. And we will kick off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. She is not currently in the waiting room, so if we can give a couple of minutes until she gets here, that would be great. Enter the meeting I D eight, four, one, three, two, eight, six, six, zero, four, four, then press pound. When you would like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum and speakers may only comment once per item. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. The city will not be providing technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the live stream of the meeting on the city's virtual meeting website at H T T P S slash B I T dot L Y slash D C special N O V one. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Office of the City Clerk at nine, nine, one, eight, zero, seventy as soon as possible. Availability of public records. All public records to an open session item on this agenda, which are not exempt from disclosure pursuant to the California Public Records Act that are distributed to a majority of the legislative body, will be available for public inspection at the City Clerk's office, City Hall located at three, three, three Ninetieth Street, Daly City, California, during normal business hours at the same time that the public records are distributed or made available to the legislative body. This meeting is now called to order. And we will kick off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And next we have a roll call.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Pastor?
Here.
And Chair Luna?
Here. And at this time, um, we have a special agenda item today. Uh, a welcome and oath of office. And I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Manalo.
She is not currently in the waiting room, so if we can give a couple of minutes until she gets here, that would be great. She just got here.
Welcome, Mayor Manalo, to our special meeting. Um, I'd like to pass uh the agenda item over to you for our welcome and oath of office.
Thank you so much, um, Madame Chair Luna. And to all the commissioners, thank you so much for uh your service um as well as staff on our Recreation Commission. Uh, we know that uh you give your time and volunteerism to give back to the city of Daly City, and for that, we are truly grateful. Um, I know we have a very special uh moment this evening to uh be able to provide the oath of uh to one of our new Recreation Commissioners this evening. Um, and so at this point.
Letting her back in.
I, I, I got disconnected there. I'm sorry. So at this point, without further ado, um, we'd like to um provide the oath of office to Regil Paniza. Look at that with his big smile. And so, um, may we have the oath of office uh on the screen, please? Uh, so, uh, Regil, um, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Regil Paniza.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
And that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Very blessed.
I know you, you are already of service and um and really uh it's wonderful to see uh young people that grew up within Daly City, give back to the city they were raised. And uh, just wonderful to have you on board. I know you're gonna do amazing work and uh congratulations. Uh, I do see my colleague on here is um Councilmember Buena Ventura, I, I yield the floor to you in case you have any um anything to say at this time.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madame Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Uh, good evening to all the members of the Commission and all the staff in Daly City. I want to congratulate uh Regil. He comes from a family of community servants, really. And that's why um I nominated him because I recognize how much uh both him and his family, including Commissioner Paniza, do a lot for the community. Um, I see uh Regil at every corner helping out, always willing to chip in and always helping his mom and and I just, I, I, I've, I felt a sense of commitment with him in, in the community, and I think he, he could do a lot of good uh on the Recreation Commitment Commission. He's a guy that has a lot of ideas. Uh, he's fearless and um he's not afraid to speak out and he's uh someone that you can rely on to get things done and to move issues forward. So I hope you take advantage of, of him and what he can bring to your commission. It's gonna be, uh, I think, um, a great commission with his addition. And uh it'll be better for us here in Daly City for our people. So thank you, uh, Commissioner Paniza for agreeing to serve. We look forward to your service. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited what I could bring to the table for our community. And a bunch of ideas, current trends and a bunch of a lot of things. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Paniza. Uh, once again, uh, welcome and thank you for committing to uh your service. I, I wanna uh welcome you again, and I'm, I'm sure you'll have a wonderful time with your uh fellow commissioners. Um, also, I know that um this will be uh Recreation Commissioner Jack Pastor's uh last meeting, I heard. Um, and so Commissioner Pastor, I want to say thank you so much for your dedication. And really how many years you've given of service. Uh, thank you so much for that. I know that um you've had a heart to serve our community um for so long. And uh, uh, I just want to say, uh, with deep appreciation, many thanks to um all the hours um and time you've given, all the ideas um and everything that you've given to our community. And so, thank you so much as well for your, for your dedication.
Appreciate that, Madame Mayor Manalo and um Councilmember Buena Ventura. Uh, I just say, I want to just share that um uh a- all the years I've um lived in Daly City and was approached by uh former council person, remember Councilwoman Carol Clatt back in the day, uh, that uh it would lead to this. Uh, many memories, uh, many acquaintances, watching Denise grow in her role from uh CCD classes at Saint Andrews to her role now and marriage and then and family and, and all the members of uh the Daly City Recreation Department who have um gone before me and who have uh since followed my path in terms of retirement from, from uh their work or their commissions. So um I, I, I think back to the day Carol Clatt came knocking at my door one December. And uh, and then being reinstated by Judith Christensen and followed by Pamela. Pamela and uh, so I um, I'm very thankful and grateful that I had a chance to be a part of the program at, at the Recreation Department and also interact during all the festivities that have been going on at the um Senior Center and uh the various activities uh around Daly City, especially the Kaboom Projects that were restoring the recreation for uh programs and parks around the city and watching War Memorial get redesigned and watching the Bay Shore Community Center grow to what it is today. So we've come a long way and then uh the brute, the future is just bright for Daly City. So um, um, congratulations to um new council member Paniza, Regil. And um, I want to thank Nathan uh for all the energy he's brought to the program. Um, Christina for taking the role to lead the, the recreation program for the past, I think the most past year now uh in, into that role. Yeah. And uh, so thank you very much, everyone. Uh, it's been a wonderful experience and um though I'm not on the Commission anymore, I'm, I'm only a phone call away for anything you may need me for. And um, but uh I'll keep monitoring the Facebook website for recreation for any activities that are happening in the near future. And uh, so thank you again. God bless you guys. And stay safe.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Pastor. Uh, and thank you so much to all the commissioners. Commissioner Nate, Commissioner Christina, Madame Chair um for all the work that you continue to do. Um, also to the staff, Denise and your whole team, uh, thank you. And uh, we appreciate all that you do for our community and the city of Daly City, from the youth to the seniors.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Manalo, and what a bittersweet day, like, you know, I, we're welcoming um Commissioner Paniza, so we're excited to, to get to know you and hopefully see you in person super soon. Um, but I'm also very sad, like, that this is Jack's um last meeting with us and I'll save more of my comments for uh, maybe I'll add it into my commissioners report. We can uh move forward with the agenda. Uh, but yeah, so I guess we can move forward with, with our regular agenda. So a first item on the list is um approval of the, our last meeting's agenda. Or, sorry, uh, approval of tonight's agenda. Um, can I get a motion to, for approval for tonight's agenda?
Go, Jack.
I'd like to enter the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. And next up is the approval of our June twenty second uh minutes um a couple of months ago. And do we have a motion for an approval?
You have a, you have a motion for approval.
A second? All those in favor?
I.
Great. And moving forward to the Director's Report.
Thank you very much, Chair Luna. So today we have our, an amazing, wonderful administrative assistant to Edgardo Valanos, and he's gonna give you an overview of kind of where we're at with our facility rentals. I know that I briefly spoke to you guys about it probably back in June about moving forward with starting rentals. But Edgardo's gonna give you an overview of where we're at and where we're going, where we're headed out of the pandemic. So I turn it over to Edgardo.
Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, so like Denise mentioned, um originally I was supposed to present about what we were planning on doing for facility rentals. Obviously, the pandemic shut down all public gatherings. And we were conservative, wanting to make sure that when the time, the time came to allow for public rentals of our facilities, that it um, that the state, the county, the city was in a good place. And that our staff and everyone was prepared. Uh, we were not going to jeopardize anyone, um, anybody in, in the community. Uh, we wanted to make sure that everything was done the right way. And we had to figure out what that right way was. There is no guideline that it's gonna fit everyone, so we had to make sure that we were diligent in, in, in making sure that everything was set before we even decided to, to uh open up for the public to reserve our facilities. But we did, uh, we started with our public spaces or outdoor areas, and that happened in March. For the indoor, obviously, we couldn't get stuff open. The state reopened in toward the end of May, early June. And as everything was happening and all the updates were coming, we were making our changes. Um, finally, we felt comfortable enough to say that, yes, we were gonna open up for uh facility rentals. So on July first, we opened the doors um literally to our office where the public could come and reserve facilities and starting, that started um the weekend of July twenty fourth is when we first started having actual facilities rented out by the public on the weekends. In order to do that, we did come up with a phased um reopening plan, and I'll show that now. Let's just do that. Oh, no. Sorry. No, unfortunately, I will not be able to share my screen. Yes, I will. I lied. So in order to reacquaint ourselves with our uh facility rental procedure, um, we did have to go through everything and see what changes needed to be made. For the most part, our procedure stayed the same. What we did include was new documentation for renters that did come to our office to reserve facilities. Um, and essentially, it was an assumption of risk and waiver of liability relating to COVID. Essentially, what this document says is that you're aware of COVID happening across the world. Um, and that you are, you as the renter are going to be responsible for yourself and for your guests. Um, when someone comes into our office to rent our facilities, that person is responsible for that rental, which in terms means they're in charge of everyone that's coming to their, whether it's a party or reunion, whatever the case may be, they are responsible for that person. Um, so they had to fill this form out in order to reserve our facilities. Um, we also, just to make sure that people were being safe during the time we're still doing social distancing, our facilities have capacities. Um, those are set by uh fire marshals. Um, so we had to kind of think about what we felt comfortable having in our facilities. So we did have um to let people know that there was gonna be a temporary capacity at each facility, and I'll go into those details um a little bit later. Uh, we did have new ways of doing the, our cleanups, things like that. So after a facility rental was completed in the past, pre-COVID, our staff would simply just put a, wipe down tables and chairs and put them away. Uh, now we are sanitizing everything in between rentals. So once the rental is done, everything's getting sanitized, everything's drying, everything's getting cleaned, put away. Um, so there was a combination of our custodial staff, our amazing custodial staff, doing their part as well as our part-time staff doing their part to make sure that everything was left clean, everything was sanitized to not leave for any chance of a transmission of COVID. Um, we did have some training on uh for our staff to kind of remind them of the procedures and policies that we have. Um, obviously, we're, we were decommissioned rentals for over a year. So we had to reintroduce the rules and, and uh all the precautions and safety measures that were in place. Made sure to provide P P for all our staff. We made sure that they were comfortable coming back to work, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, but we made sure that everyone was on board before we decided to say, yes, we're gonna reserve our facilities. So let's go. So I'm gonna talk about the phases. So um these have actually shifted from the very first, so back in July, I would have showed you a different phase one. It started to shift and it's adapted. Um, and so things do, um, and it goes to show our supervisors and coordinators and their amazing part-time staff who worked the facilities being willing and able to kind of adapt as we, as we have to. We started off slow. So um at the very beginning, we currently were in phase one. Um, we're only reserving these five facilities at the, at the moment. And these are kind of some of the limitations and restrictions that we put in place. For now, we were not allowing weekday rentals. We, during the pandemic, we lost a lot of part-time staff. There were just weren't hours to be, to give in and to be assigned. So a lot of our staff had to move on. Unfortunately, that means that we have less to work with. We are in the, in the, in the uh hiring mode. We're trying to get more staff. Um, but to alleviate some of that pressure of the staff, um, we said no weekday rentals. We're gonna restrict it simply to, to weekends. And typically, parties and other, you know, gatherings typically happen on the weekends anyway. But it was to help uh kind of offset the fact that we don't have staff. So we were only allowing for one rental per weekend at any of these given uh facilities. Um, so if something was rented on a Saturday, we would block off the Sunday. This allowed for a true sanitation, cleaning, um, until our staff felt comfortable. It also gave our full-time staff time to kind of see what staff was available so that um we weren't pressured into, you know, filling in. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that everything was staffed. On the previous page, I put that we're trying to get We're trying to get as as many of the rentals as we have to have at least two part-time staff. Uh just to keep everything safe and have them be available um at all times in case something were to happen. Um so after today, actually, um starting this weekend, we're actually allowing for two rentals on a weekend, number said room at Geller Clubhouse. Um but again, due to to staffing levels, Lincoln and Telly will still be restricted to one per weekend. Um after talking to our staff, they feel comfortable and ready to be able to turn around and clean and sanitize a facility. So that it can be used the next day, this gives the community more opportunities to have gatherings at the halls. Um we are currently putting restrictions for dates and times. Um so again, the weekends and then the curfews would be from ten AM to eight PM, um the exception is the picnic shelter, which is ten AM to six PM. Um the ten eight ten to eight kind of gave our opportunity so that our staff wasn't working too late. Um to allow for the sanitation and get their bearings of how what needs to be done, um so it's worked out nicely so far. Um uh we did set the temporary capacities to fifty percent, um also a sheet that has kind of more of the details. Um so if a facility had a hundred and fifty, that's the capacity of the facility, we're only allowing seventy-five people at this time. Um it's harder uh for those that want to have bigger gatherings, but this time. We're still not ready to have gatherings of, you know, over a hundred people. Um we're we're working on it, but we want to make sure that, you know. The the rates of transmission are down, that vaccination rates are high, so before we start making those moves. We feel comfortable and I'll talk about it in phase two that um we're in a place that we are ready to kind of move forward. Uh we'll talk about that in a bit, um at this time, we are not allowing alcohol. Um part of this was because um the county is still has uh restrictions for indoor. Where you still should be wearing a mask, except when you're eating and drinking, adding alcohol to that mix. It it's probably gonna be something that you'd have people not wearing their masks, so at this time, we're not allowing alcohol. Um again, that's something that we're looking into and we'll go into that. Um athletic rentals, so the gyms, so at this time, we're not allowing for gym rentals for athletic use. Um right now, we're using our spaces for our classes and recreation programs, so um. We've had uh our mini hoops go on, we've had basketball clinics, we have different classes that have gone in our gym rentals. But that's because we have control of who's coming in, who's going out with the facility rental. We have to rely on the renter, the person that comes into our office to to make sure that they're doing everything. At this time, we're kind of being a little conservative um with athletic athletic rentals, so. Um we're gonna kind of, we've been holding off on that for now. Um so that's phase one, um our phase two, which we hope to initiate in the new year. Um would potentially have the addition of Lawson Hall, War Memorial Community Center's Activity Room. Um those would be the other two added to the ones that we're already um renting out. Um that is pending on staffing, so um I've gotten confirmation, Lawson Hall, we have enough staff to cover that facility. We're still kind of waiting to see where staffing levels are for War Memorial, but once we have that, we'll finalize and update our rental sheet, which I'll show you. Um the other thing that we will potentially be adding is uh weekday options. So currently, we do allow for weekday rentals, those are on a case-by-case uh basis and it's pretty much. For funeral receptions, uh repass, things like that. Um we were very, you know, cautious about what we were able to allow. Um these weekday options in the new year could potentially be for uh homeowner association meetings. Um and other gatherings that are serial gatherings throughout the year. Um we did start allowing uh the veterans of foreign war to meet, um so that's kind of the test trial to see how it goes. But starting in the new year, we'll be allowing um others to apply and and qualify for weekday options. We are also talking about expanding the hours, so currently it's ten AM to eight PM, so we're gonna expand to ten to ten. Um and we're gonna kind of incrementally add hours until we are at the place where we're at our final uh curfews. Um the capacity, we're gonna be moving from fifty percent to seventy-five percent of the facility's capacity. Um we'll have updated numbers once we're ready to to uh put those out there. Um as far as alcohol, we're looking into um allowing alcohol as per rental agreements, which is in our rental packet. Um so there are restrictions of what kind of rentals can have alcohol, there is an insurance fee associated with alcohol. Um so we're looking into adding that back. Um with athletic rentals specifically, we are currently gonna be holding our rental um the rentals for gyms. So that we can still have our basketball league um and other programs that we want to run. Um but uh depending on what the schedule is. We may be allowing the public to rent out our gyms starting in the new year, um and that is ten for for the time being. Um and then our phase three, um now this is for now, our phase three, hopefully our final phase. But potentially there could be a four, um again, we're adapting to to what's happening. We're making sure that everything's uh set before we make any decisions, but that would potentially, you know, allow for the cafe to be open. Hillside Park and Marchbank Park Clubhouses, those two only house fifty, so we're not renting those out just because they're so small. Um and then again, the Pacelli Gym, the Bachelorette Community Center and the War Memorial Upper Gym for larger gatherings. Um again, all those could fall in at the same time, or we may introduce one, not the other. It really will depend on staffing and what's available to us, um and we'll make that decision, make it, you know, clear to the public. And then again, the, you know, expanding the hours, so in the past, we've gone till midnight. Um we're looking into if we're gonna continue that or if we're gonna stay and have a more conservative uh uh curfew. Um and then eventually we want to get to the full capacity. And again, athletic rentals allowing public to to come in and rent spaces for for leagues, tournaments, practices, things like that. Um what I will next share is the. Just to kind of give you an idea, so this is our current um hall rental fee sheet. Um so this is available on our website, it's available in our office, and this will get updated as we um move on to phase two. So currently, we have the the facilities that are available, the current capacity, so. So normally, those capacities are doubled, so our Geller Park normally will hold a hundred and thirty, our Sed Room a hundred and fifty. Telly would hold a hundred and sixty, Lincoln Park two hundred, and the the picnic shelters would hold up to a hundred and fifty. Um the fees.
Are you showing a slide? Cause we can't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me stop sharing and try again. Here we go. How about now, okay, so um again, the facilities are here, the capacities would be doubled. Um the one, we did not change the rental fees, um obviously, we still need to cover the cost of the facility. What so while the capacity was reduced, um you know, the costs don't change, we still need to pay staff, we still. Need to make sure that everything's sanitized, that things are, you know, in to-top shape. So we still have the same fees for those facilities, um they have not changed um. Our discounted hourly for Daly City residents is in that column, everyone else pays the standard hour fee. What did change was insurance fee, um insurance fee is based off the capacity. So we, you know, we made sure that, you know, we're charging them what the 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 insurance fee was for the full capacity because. Obviously, we're not allowing that, so that fee will change once capacity goes up. Um deposits have not changed, and this is just a little bit more information about the curfews, those will get updated. Again, as we move into the next phase. Um and then just to kind of recap, all the information that I shared is on our website. Uh if you navigate to the recreation page, there's a a link to the facility rentals page and all the information is here. Um we try and keep it updated, so the link here will take you to that fee sheet, will show you what uh facilities we are renting. So once the uh second phase moves into play, um that'll get updated and um the public will have access to all the information. And as always, um our our phone number is there, that's our admin office. Um I want to give kudos to to Justin Virginia and Nicole, our admin staff, um who've been holding it down, um taking calls, trying to help. Um the community get their the reservations so they can have their festivities. Um again, um we've been renting out, so this last weekend marks the fifteenth weekend. That we've had rentals since July and we've had over sixty-one rentals. Um Geller Park or Geller Clubhouse every weekend has been reserved. Um others kind of vary, but it's really dependent on what the the customer wants, what the community needs. Um so um you know, there's a need and we're trying to meet that, but we're making sure that we're doing it responsibly. Um and that we're doing our part to make sure that, you know, COVID has kept that bay and that Daly City's kept safe, so. At this time, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
I just um. Yeah, no, I I was gonna say um that, no, it's it's great that you guys have this phased approach. Um and definitely in these times, like conservative is is the best to go. Um and I'm just curious, like I I know you mentioned that you're hiring. Um and I know that that's sort of a challenge overall out there, um do you see that becoming a bigger challenge in the long run?
I I don't know, to tell you the truth, um you know, it's. We we so our department special where we have the, you know, the recreator title. But they do so many different things, so you know, we have people that go in to recreation and want to work with kids specifically. There are people that like to do the facility work, so um and we share the staff, so there's gonna be staff that work after school and on the weekends they work at facility rentals. Um as we're hiring for aquatics programs or after-school programs or youth recreation program. Um they'll get their bearings, you know, working that program. And then, you know, they'll start to be like, oh, where else can I earn hours, where else can I work? Uh what other parts of the the department can I can I assist in, and that's where we kind of start drawing people. Um but yeah, we're we're constantly hiring, um if anyone out there wants to apply and or more information about the positions. They can actually search on, uh if they go to calops.org, um and you can search by city, you can search. Um and you just put in Recreater, Daly City, Recreation, Daly City, you'll get our postings where um it'll kind of give you a breakdown of the opportunities. Um or if you'd like, you can uh give us a call at the number six five zero nine nine one eight zero zero one. Or you can send an email to active@dailycity.org. Um so those are are the ways to communicate, whether it's about rentals, programs, to get hired. Um they can contact us there, uh but you know, we do, we do see people applying and we reach out and see where they want to work. Um and give them all the opportunities, cause uh it's a great place for students, you know, if you're in college, if you're in high school. Great jumping off point to start your career, um even if you're not interested in recreation in the long haul. It's a great opportunity to to be part of the community, meet the community. Um cause the people that work the facilities are the ones that are face-to-face with the community every day, so. Uh excellent opportunity to kind of get those skills uh fine-tuned, so.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Edgardo just said, uh he knows he was my supervisor. And facility rentals for any college student is it's honestly one of the best gigs. Because it's on the weekend, it's super chill, um you're just managing, making sure nothing goes crazy, the. Place doesn't get set on fire, but it's some, I was able to do my homework, do my studies, knock a like. Knock a whole bunch of stuff off my to-do list while still being attentive to the to the uh the job at hand. But honestly, it was one of the best side gig opportunities as a young person, so I definitely encourage it. Uh but on the topic of your the phases, uh just to have clarity, we're kind of ending that first phase right now, right?
So we um we've adjusted, uh we're starting to kind of, so originally, we had stuck with the uh one rental per weekend. Um but we kind of started to to judge and ask staff and we adjusted that phase one. So originally, phase one, so there was four phases prior, so had it presented in July, there were four phases. Um we've kind of started melding the two together, um again, it's adaptive, so obviously, like, I'd love to tell everyone that. Come January first, you know, phase two's gonna kick off, but if something happens in December, you know, we're gonna adapt.
Like, there's only like so many weeks up until January, if we're only doing rentals per week, so we're like looking at. Less than ten weekends before essentially phase two.
So so um I I'll clarify, so people can rent out further, so. The rules and the limitations that are in place now are if you came into our office today, those are the rules and limitations that were in place. Um but they're, you know, they're in effect, but you can rent six months out, so if someone wants to rent out for something that's gonna happen in March. They can do that now, um as the uh the limitations change, we'll update the renter, let them know, hey, like. You know, when you rented, you could only do fifty percent, but now you can actually have seventy-five percent. So um we will keep renters, the ones that come in, that just want to secure that space. Um they're made aware that these are the limitations that are in place now, until they change, they are what they are. No matter if you rented for two weeks from now, two months from now, six months from now. Um but our staff has been really diligent of making sure that they're updated, if they call back, we're, you know, explaining the situation, so. Um and yes, there's only ten weeks, but we figured that's not, we can start the fresh, you know. Cause uh rentals are gonna stop around the holidays, we don't rent during the holidays, unfortunately, we don't have staff, um and we have our city uh closure. Um so we, uh okay, let's just do a clean start come the beginning of the the new year, that's when the new ones will take into effect.
No, for sure, and I guess the last thing I wanted to ask is, um because you're. You're not doing back-to-back days, like, for example, the party's not, if the party's on Saturday, you're not gonna run the event on Sunday because. The time it takes to sanitize everything, um is there any like investment? That you may need in order to like speed that up, cause I know like the chairs, for example, is on a rack, like I'm imagining someone with a hose. And like, you know, like with those pretty sanitized, they're not all of obscene.
Yeah, no, so um when we first started, that was the the goal, is to eventually get to uh. To back-to-back, just how we used to, um so we're we're there. Um up until this point, we're only doing one per weekend because we were trying to get um. Kind of get a handle, have our staff make sure that they were able to do it, um so we've been working with our custodial staff. Um making sure that we we're doing what we can, so we do have um the electrostatic. Um they're essentially guns that spray out the solution that essentially clings to the surface, kills whatever's on it, dries. And then staff, you know, they wait for it to dry, they're doing other things, put everything away. Well, now with the back-to-back, essentially what happens is they spray everything, they make sure everything's clean. And they can actually leave it out to dry because the next day they're actually gonna be used, so um. This weekend, so people have already been reserving back-to-back rentals, we started taking those uh a while ago. But this weekend is the first one, we're actually gonna have the back-to-back rental. So this weekend, we'll actually have two on that, on a like, uh I think Geller will have one on Saturday, one on Sunday. Um so up to this point, we haven't, but we've kind of gotten got it down, so our staff knows. They gotta go in, they gotta clean, they gotta make sure everything's cool, our custodial staff comes in anyway to make sure that it's really clean. And then it's ready for the for the next day.
Nah, that that's beautiful, man, sounds good.
Eduardo?
Yes.
Thanks for the comprehensive overview of the different phases, I think that's what the the general public is looking forward to, to kind of like. Help guide them through the process and dialing a phone. They can get all the phases out there and and kind of like work it into their timeline on when they'd like to schedule their activity.
Yeah.
And um so that's a very um timely manner that you're able to put out something systematically for them to understand. In those three phases, so um um on everybody have, I appreciate you doing that and then there's you're recording your staff doing that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, good job.
Thank you, and you know, again, it goes to 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 our staff or part-time staff who's out there, you know, every weekend working those hours. You know, every weekend working those hours and just making sure that the spaces are available for the community. Cause, you know, it's, it was a year of, of you couldn't see anybody. Now, you know, uh, people are doing it safely, they're doing responsibly. Um, and you know, our staff is, you know, they're putting themselves on the line, obviously, but at the same time, they're, they're doing what they can to protect themselves. Um, and I just wanted to put out there to, um, we have gotten a lot of, uh, asking about, again, I was talking about gym rentals and, um, there has been, you know, like, it doesn't make sense why we're not allowing for gym rentals, but, you know, the, the, the warriors can run Chase Center, right? Obviously, we are, we're a city, we're a small facility. Chase Center has hundreds of employees. They have the ability to check for vaccinations. They have those rules and regulations to do that. Um, you know, we, we do not, we don't have, you know, we have one or two staff that are going to work that event. And, um, again, the responsibility falls on the renter, not on us. Um, you know, that they know the risk of, you know, and it's the new reality, right? You know, going outside that there's a chance. So, but at this point in time, we're not ready to, the athletic part, to have that be part of the equation. But again, we are working towards it so that we can allow for that again. So, um, I know we've gotten a lot of calls and emails about that. Um, and we want to make sure that people know that we're not, you know, we're doing what's right for Daily City. We're doing what's right for the community. Uh, we don't want to push it. We're actually ahead of the game. Some facilities, some other cities in the peninsula are still not reserving facilities. You know, while I say we're doing it conservatively, we are to our standards. But we're, we're doing what we can to kind of get people back to normal. So, just want to put it out there. So if anyone has questions about gyms specifically, but there are, you know, just kind of to promote our stuff, our staff have found ways to do programming indoors. We are offering, uh, open gym, basketball, volleyball, badminton, pickleball at War Memorial. Um, we do have registration for that open now. So if you're interested in playing inside, um, there is an opportunity still. So, just want to put that out there.
Hey, thank you so much, Egardo. Um, I'm looking forward to planning maybe my mom's birthday. Uh, next, next year. Um, moving forward on to commissioners reports. Do we have any reports? I have one, but I'll open the floor up first. Okay. Well, just two things. Um, so first, um, I know it's been a while since we, we met, but I wanted to share that I got to check out, um, one of the drive-through events. And I know that there is one coming up soon. So, I am definitely a fan of these drive-through events. It's the only one I've been to, um, this whole year. And I felt very spoiled going to the park and rec one, just because for fifteen dollars, you get so many like snacks and food. I was stuffed um, watching the Goonies. And surprisingly, I've never seen the Goonies. So it was a delight. Uh, so I just want to say, um, congrats to Park and Rec team for putting on these great drive-through events. And so it's, I think it's such a great way to keep people engaged and it was just nice seeing, you know, the little kids like with their families, like all sprawled out on their blankets and even if it's like super cold, I can tell that people really enjoy it. And I think the, the extra goodies, that way makes it worthwhile. And it's definitely such a better deal than going to the movie theater, I think. So I just wanted to, um, put that plug in. And, but second, you know, I just wanted to just kind of revisit, um, you know, Jack, um, last meeting. I just personally wanted to say that, you know, when I first joined, Jack has been nothing but just such a welcoming figure in our commission. So, he's been supportive and always thoughtful, very present. And I'm just, I'm just gonna, we're absolutely going to miss you. It won't be the same, um, since you're going to be gone. But I think, you know, being able to, we've always been able to see you as this thoughtful, um, you know, anytime we need some sort of thoughtful insight, you have always given that to us. And so I just want to say thank you for everything, for teaching us, um, do, you know, newer commissioner members on everything about the community from all of your years of experience. So thank you, thank you so much. And I'm going to miss you so much. So, hopefully we get together, uh, when we can, um, you know, to, to properly, uh, celebrate, you know, your time with the commission.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Nate. And, um, congratulations again to Regil, um, on your appointment. And, um, yeah, I'm only a phone call away. You need to tap me on my shoulder for any ideas or guidance. Uh, feel free to do so, Regil. So, um, again, I'm going to miss you guys, but I'm not far. So, I'll be keeping an eye on the, on your Facebook recreation posters.
Yeah, we better see you around, Jack.
Yeah, I was about to ask about the, any mention about the, the, you know, being that December is kind of like around the corner. Uh, the Christmas tree lighting, uh, information. Is that, uh, on a calendar yet?
Uh, the actual, um, dates are not.
Okay.
Uh, I should say, we're not going to share yet that information.
Okay.
But that will be coming down the line because we have a few events coming up. And we want to make sure that those are highlighted before we do the Frosty Fest Winter Wonderland deal.
There you go. Okay.
We'll definitely keep you in, involved in it. Yeah.
Alrighty. Thanks.
That was Jack's final demand, y'all.
We can definitely celebrate there and then hopefully Regil can join us and we can welcome you. So.
By the way, welcome.
Um, and up next, announcements and communications.
Thank you, Chairluna. So, speaking of a drive-in there, we do have our fall drive-in movie called Onward and it's going to happen on a Wednesday. Now, you would think, why are you doing it on a school night? Well, we're not because the next day is Veterans Day. So Wednesday, November tenth, we're going to have it down here at Westlake Park. Um, gonna have it in the back tennis court area. I think, um, Chairluna, you were at Geller the time before, yes?
I was at, uh, Westlake Park.
Oh, perfect. So that's where we're going back. So maybe you could all meet down at Westlake Park for an outdoor movie night. We are going to have some delicious popcorn and it's fifteen dollars per car. Um, parking opens at five o'clock and then the movie will start around six thirty or when it gets dark. Um, it's a social distance event and feel free to, within your zone, to bring your blankets and lawn chairs and be comfortable with your family. And then we recommend a battery operated boombox as we broadcast the movie on our ninety-seven five or some, I think it's the FM radio. So that's a great event. It should be nice and crisp for you to wear your, you know, parka jackets and all of that and get cozy watching onward. And then I just want to do a little bit of a recap. We just had our trunk or treat event this past Friday evening. It was a drive-through. There were two, um, kind of drive-through times, a six thirty and a seven thirty. And it was packed, um, on both of those times. We had cars going through from the time it opened at six thirty all the way through until about eight fifteen. So we had representation from our, um, city departments. Water Waste Water came in with their dinosaur and their elephant and um, they wowed us as usual. We had PD come in and do a dynamic drunk trunk. Um, and then we had some great, great, um, representation from the community, which was awesome. So we had probably about fifteen to twenty cars, Egardo. Yeah. And it's all in the back parking lot and they drove around. So that was really cool. Um, and then each child got a, a goodie bag of candy and deliciousness on their way out. And then fire came in on the back end and gave them the next extra set of candy. So I'm sure the kids were quite, um, candied up before the weekend started and then Halloween itself happened. And then the last thing that I wanted to say was to Jack, um, twenty-six years you have given to, to recreation as a recreation commissioner, but you have given to Daily City for more years than that through the Ceremony Athletic League and everything. And I want to say thank you so much. You are a blessing and I'm going to really, really, really miss you. So I, I wish you all the best. I, I thank you for the support that you've given to the recreation division and everything that you are. And I, I just hope that you have an amazing new adventure in whatever you do and just enjoy it. And always know that you're welcome back to come and celebrate and enjoy everything. Cause we're here for you. So thank you so much, Jack. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you.
That ends my announcements.
Thank you, Denise. Um, so moving on, are there any public comments at this time?
There are no public comments.
Okay. So if there are no other announcements, uh, this meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two, two thousand and twenty-two. I thought that took a minute to say, at seven PM. Uh, thank you, everybody. Welcome, Regil. And thank you so much, Jack. I hope to see you pretty soon.
See everyone soon. Take care, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy holidays.
All right. Alrighty.